February 4, 2020. Please all rise for the invocation by Senior Pastor Tony Pounders of Biloxi First United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Let's pray together as we bow our heads. Almighty God, our Father, we ask that you come and be present within the meeting of this city council, that you would grant wisdom and grace, that decisions made here would be for the good of all the people of this great city, and may you always, may you always shed your grace upon these people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin, will you lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its standing, unafraid, undebted, and just as one.
Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Now do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'm gonna go ahead and read it.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
To our policy agenda, we're substituting item 4A. We're adding the exhibit only. To our consent agenda, we're adding item 5O, resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from Pitcher Point Investments. And to our routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome, everybody, to the February meeting. We're honored this evening to have the family of Edmund Boudreaux with us. Later in the council agenda tonight, our council will be asked to approve a special recognition in his honor. This is very appropriate, as Edmund was Biloxi and through and through. He taught us all about Biloxi's history. He loved this Biloxi community and its colorful past. Through Edmund, we all learned about our history. So to Edmund's family, thank you for being here with us tonight to join in celebrating his contribution to Biloxi and the entire Gulf Coast. And I'm gonna pass the mic to Mike. And we're gonna ask his children, wife, and everybody to come up. And after this presentation, Mike is gonna read. Thank you.
What the mayor meant is for you're supposed to come up now, and he's gonna stand with you. He's gonna stand with you. And we're gonna read this proclamation. All the family members come up, please. Biloxi proclamation. Whereas Edmund Boudreaux loved Biloxi, and he lived Biloxi history. And whereas Edmund, who died December 22, 2019, was a self-taught historian who established himself as an authority on Biloxi and Gulf Coast history, he authored three books about Biloxi and coast history. He penned a weekly newspaper column called "The Gulf Coast Time Traveler", and he was frequently garbed in period costume at various city functions portraying explorer DeIrberville. And whereas Edmund was born in Georgetown, South Carolina, but spent his life as a Biloxian, he was a sailor in the U.S. Navy during the Vietnam War and retiree from the South Central Bell AT&amp;T, where he served for nearly 40 years. He was husband to the former Virginia Bertuzzi, who he had married 50 years ago on August 10, 1969, just days before Hurricane Camille. And he was father to the three sons, Edmund, Tony Brandon, and Marcus, and Papa to nine grandchildren. And whereas Edmund volunteered his time to many civic organizations and community projects, but his hallmark was his passion for history, whether it was researching the records of years gone by, taking part in local archaeological digs, or giving an entertaining presentation on the founding of Biloxi. Edmund was twice recognized as Biloxi's Art and History Volunteer of the Year for his efforts in promoting the city's history and culture. And he was named Historian of the Year by the city in 1996. And whereas Edmund Boudreaux helped this community appreciate its sense of place, the things that make Biloxi different from any other community in the country, Edmund Boudreaux helped us understand who we are and how we got here, which is a preview to where we are going. Now therefore I, I should say he, Andrew Fofo Gillich, Mayor Biloxi, in recognition of Edmund's contributions to the community, do hereby proclaim February 13, 2020, which is the 321st anniversary of the founding Biloxi as Edmund Boudreaux Day. And for the family members, just as a reminder, after this photograph and you take your seats, stick with us for a little while, because there's another special event coming along that you'll be interested in.
Let me say, don't go anywhere. I mean, you can go sit down, but I want to tell you, Edmund straightened a lot of things up. I know we had a lot of togetherness at the Leadership Gulf Coast at the lodge, and we had all kinds of stories. But he did straighten one thing out for Biloxi and everything. You know, 1699, other cities use 1699, right? Well, Edmund researched this, and look, I still can't figure it out. But he said, look, he didn't go to Ocean Springs. Okay, let's get that right. The log says that, you know, you can look at the bayou right west of the mall. Now, I don't know how you knew where the mall was going, but that's where he landed. But Edmund did straighten that out. So thank y'all. Thank you.
They always stuff a microphone in my face. I just want to say, on behalf of the whole family, thank you, Mayor Gillich. Thank you to all the city council for honoring our daddy. He loved Biloxi, and we appreciate everything that y'all have done for us. Thank you.
We love y'all, too.
Your mama, thank you. Okay. Want to ask April? She's here. Is April Cattarella? Thank you, April. Come on up, please, and I think she's gonna give us a little info on the Gulf Coast Muscular Dystrophy Association. Thank you.
Hi, council. Thank y'all so much for having us today. My name is April Cattarella. I'm with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and I'm here today to recognize the Biloxi Fire Department for their efforts with our Fill the Boot Drive. But before I do that, I'm gonna welcome Candace up. She is gonna let y'all know her MDA story. She is one of our local families, and it's important to us that you guys know that you're helping local citizens when you're doing things with the MDA. So do you want to come say a quick word?
Hi, good evening. Wasn't really sure who to talk to. I'll try to be brief. It's actually been a long time since we've worked with the MDA clinic for camps. My son is 30. I have three children. It's my oldest. Him and I were both diagnosed at the same time. I actually learned about my disease the same time he did. And he was just starting high school. He had plans to go into the military after high school, but when he found out that he had MDA, he just, you know, took it really hard. It's already hard enough to be a high schooler, and he's in his first year in our hometown. And he was, you know, just really down and didn't feel good about everything. But we, of course, joined with the MDA clinic, and not only did they give us a lot of help, but they talked to Zach about going to camp. And this was about 17 years ago. But he did decide to go to the camp in the central Louisiana, and it was just absolutely life-changing for him. I still get choked up. I talked to him a couple of days ago and said, hey, I'm gonna be talking to the Biloxi City Council and letting them know the importance of camp. And he's like, absolutely, you know, it's so good that you're gonna do that, because they gave him inspiration. It made him realize that he wasn't alone and that he could make a difference in his own life with people around him. So he's a singer, and he was singing in high school. He just decided to go for it, and he made state twice. He ended up going to Centenary College in Shreveport on a full scholarship for singing. He's traveled the world, and he got his degree in music education. So he gets to teach children now. And he's such an inspiration. But it really honestly started, no matter how much I could say, oh, it's okay, you know, things are gonna be great. And, you know, even though he uses a walker and he has leg braces, he's doing, you know, still so much more than I even do. Still such an inspiration. But camp absolutely changed his life. That's why it's important for these kids to know that they're not alone and that there's other people that can relate, and it can keep their spirits up and know that they can have a future and make such a difference. So we really appreciate y'all continuing to support the MDA.
Now, Chief and Andy. So just as a final report, in 2019, we did a boot drive out in October, and they are welding a beautiful brass axe, because we raised, as a city, $16,759, which ended up being the top third department in the state of Mississippi. So thank you. So thank you.
Next, I think we have a presentation by CTA Kevin and Chris Foray. We're here anxiously awaiting. Thank you.
All the good news.
Kevin Coggan, Coast Transit Authority. I want to thank you for putting me on the agenda this evening. Pleasure to be here. During your budget workshops, we presented a budget request for fiscal year 2020 of $333,000. That's to support three routes, Casino Hopper, Highway 90, Pass Road, eight buses, 25,000 hours of service annually, about 315,000 riders. You were able to provide 288,000, which leaves us a shortage of local money of $45,000, or 13% of the overall budget. And you invited me to come back later this year, January. And I appreciate the opportunity to do that, so I'm here now to answer any questions you may have and to request your consideration for fully funding what our request was.
Do you have any questions?
Hello. Can you explain to us, I know we got an email, but can you explain the routes and what would actually be cut back if the funding isn't there?
Yes, sir. There's three routes. Casino Hopper carries a lot of tourists and workers. There's two buses running seven days a week. The Beach Comer runs six days a week. It's two trolleys on Highway 90. It's predominantly locals and workers, a lot of workers coming into Biloxi from the west side. And then Route 34 is four buses. That operates between Biloxi and Gulfport. That's predominantly locals. Lot of ridership on that route. So it's tough to decide what to cut. Anything we cut is really gonna be detrimental to businesses and workers. So 13% of 25,000 hours is 3,250. To get to that point, we would need to eliminate four days a week service on the Beach Comer and cut that back to Friday and Saturday only. That gets us 3,225 hours. That's a big hit to take. A lot of people are using it for work commute. The Beach Comer, the trolleys that run on Highway 90 on the Beach Comer, it takes about 38 minutes to get from Gulfport to Biloxi. Pass Road takes an hour and 15 minutes, because it covers more area and makes a lot more stops. So you have a lot of work commuters using the Beach Comer. There's no easy way to balance the budget with the amount of service that we're providing. We've cut back over the years, looked at unproductive times and cut back. And for instance, we don't do Sunday service on the Beach Comer anymore. You know, all three of those routes are very productive, but to get to where we need to be, we would need to look at cutting out four days of the six days a week on the Beach Comer route.
Mr. Coggan, how many riders does that represent that we'd be cutting out approximately?
Well, the Beach Comer is carrying about 55,000 annual, and so...
50,000 a year?
55 annual.
Okay.
So, you know, you'd only be running two days left. So, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 35,000 riders.
35,000. Have you considered maybe a dollar increase in the fare? And then that would cover a pretty good part there, 35,000? And maybe more if you're doing that weekend still. So that'd be 55,000 if you went up a dollar.
It's a complicated formula when you start raising fares, because FTA reimburses operating costs after you deduct fare box. So fare box is not used dollar-for-dollar for local operating. Unfortunately, you can only realize about half of it. So, and we can't go up on the fares in Biloxi and have a different fare structure everywhere else. And so all the other routes we serve, Gulfport, DeIrbville, Ocean Springs, are fully funded. So it's not feasible to go up on fixed route fares just in Biloxi and leave the others stay the same.
So if you went up 33 cents all across the board, would you be able to use those monies? Or do you have to use it specifically in the municipality that you go up in?
Your funding formula that I provide you every year, and it's consistent, we use that for each city. The ridership and the revenue that we get from the ridership in your city is applied to your funding formula to fund the operation. So the fares that are generated in each municipality stay in that municipality. Helps fund the operation of their service.
And I'm just gonna make a comment. So if there is such a demand for the Casino Hopper, and you went up, and the fare was higher than it was in another location, I don't know why that would be unfair if there's such a supply and demand. I mean, I don't know.
Federal regulations require us to be consistent in our fares. We can't charge in one part of the fixed route system one fare, in the other parts of the fixed route system a higher fare. That would be disproportionate, you know, across the Gulf Coast community.
When was the last time? I'm sorry, I've got limited time. When was the last time there was a fare increase?
It's been a few years. Our fare structure, your citizens, our consumers pay a higher rate of the operating cost in other systems, because we don't do free and reduced transfers. We have fare zones. So our riders are paying a lot more of the share of the operating cost than any other transit system in the region. I do fare analysis every several years and look at what everybody else is doing. Our regular fare is a dollar and a quarter. Everybody else is a dollar and a quarter or a dollar 50. But again, we don't do free transfers. So if you were in another system and you got on the bus at Biloxi and you wanted to go to Gulfport, our regular fare is a dollar 50. A sister system, you would pay a dollar 50 or maybe, to get there, or maybe a quarter on the fare zone. Our fare is $3. So we're collecting a much higher percentage of fares as a percentage of the operating cost in other transit systems. So our people are paying more than other consumers in other cities.
And I just have one last question, and I'll let everybody else talk. But your fuel costs, for this fiscal year you're in, are they online with what you projected? Are they lower?
They're a little lower at the moment. Our fuel cost as a percentage of our operating cost is very small. So fuel does not really have a major impact on our operating cost, you know, unless it goes up or down significantly. Because it's such a small percentage of the overall cost.
All right. That's all I have.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Coggan. The Casino Hopper, how many passengers annually roughly?
Casino Hopper is doing about 165,000. Two buses, seven days a week, two trolleys, actually. I don't know if you all noticed, but we just put two brand-new trolleys out there recently. $250,000 apiece. They've been sitting out there, working for several months. We paid for those 100% with federal and state grants.
Route 34, what's the ridership there?
Route 34 is 105,000. That's the Biloxi share. It travels in Biloxi and Gulfport, so it's doing about 210,000 a year total. And the Biloxi half of that is 105,000.
Right. To continue, I mean, what you've done basically is, with the funds we've given you this year, we said, come back, we'll see how the year progresses, and maybe we'll have more funding to give you. But based on what you just told us, without any increase in funding or making up that 13%, and based on the ridership, you're looking at reducing the Beach Comer from six days a week to two days a week?
Yes, sir.
And that would basically cover the increase?
Yes.
Or that would permit us to fund what we actually pay for?
That would eliminate the local funding deficit.
Right. And that's the route that has the least amount of ridership. It happens to be the one... And you said that's the Beach Comer. That's not the Casino Hopper. That's folks going up and down the coast, right? Biloxi Transit Center to Edgewater Mall. Do we know how many of those are senior citizens?
Senior citizens, you know, I'm trying to recall from memory at my age. That's not a good thing right now. But, you know, senior citizens are probably, you know, we're a retirement community, so we have a lot of seniors. I would say senior citizen ridership is probably about 15%.
Okay. So basically, it comes down to, based on your advice, that if we're not gonna increase our funding, then cut back the Beach Comer from six days a week to two days a week. That'd be Saturday and Sunday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday. And then we'd be getting our money's worth?
Yes, sir.
Or less, getting what we pay for, basically?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coggan.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. As council to spread the expenses from the city travel credit card upon the minutes. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any departmental reports tonight? If not, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
I think with the city doing for Edmund is a great thing. It's gonna be Edmund Boudreaux Weekend, because at the visitor center, we're gonna have the historic, he was always there, dressed out, always brought all the good stuff, sat there and talked to him forever. He loved it. Had that cannon he used to carry around. Supposed to be a gun, but it's awesome. In your life, everybody gets a chance to meet a good guy. And in my life, I met Edmund. He was a good guy. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Okay. I had a couple of questions, some issues in the community. I don't see Walt here, so I'll hold them off till the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Deming?
I don't have much. Kristy, I did send you an email. If you check it and get back with me tomorrow about it. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes. Just want to remind everybody, if you have nothing to do Thursday night, February 27, at 5:30, I have a ward meeting. It's free to the public, no refreshments, but plenty of entertainment, always. I do want to, Mr. Rhodey's not here, but I know that he sent us all an email. I'd like to read it. It's kind of interesting. It says, "Council, I'll not be able to attend tonight's 6 o'clock meeting, as I have to be in Jackson to prepare for a deposition. Please see attached spreadsheet of service requests required of Oscarinda for the north contract. As of Tuesday, February 4, there are 216 total service requests, of which 64 are fence-related issues, nine retaining wall, 10 sidewalk, 35 driveway issues, and 98 are related to water meter, grass to be mowed, or other. The city's preparing a letter with our attorneys to go to Oscarinda and their surety notifying them of the lack of progress on the service requests and direct Oscarinda to provide a response within seven days of an acceptable plan to restore or make good such damage or injury. A schedule which reflects a realistic date of prosecution to address the service requests will also be required. If Oscarinda fails to provide an acceptable response, I'll recommend to the administration to engage in our Repair/Replace 2019 Contractor DNA to begin the work of restoring such property and the service requests, and the costs thereof shall be deducted from monies due or which may come due Oscarinda. Regarding our reimbursements from MEMA currently there is a $2.73, $2.75 million in progress for reimbursement to the city. Also, the city received an additional $4.4 million from FEMA to reimburse the city for the cost of permitting and activities related to environmental historical preservation services. This additional $4.4 million will restore the funds previously used from our infrastructure construction to pay for the aforementioned services. Currently, I'm negotiating with MEMA and FEMA for an additional $15 million related to change orders which were paid out of our construction funding. Respectfully, Walt Rhodey." That's all. That concludes my report.
Mr. Glavin?
Thank you. First and foremost, to the Boudreaux family, our deepest condolences. What a great man Edmund was, and we are gonna miss him. That's one, I mean, he's irreplaceable, but everything that he shared with us will be in our hearts in Biloxi forever. So our condolences. Next, the state of the city, Mayor. Good job. We're gonna hold you to that axe-throwing contest. We're gonna have one of our council meetings there soon. Axe catching, you know, so that'll be fun. I'm sure you and the godfather of the council down here would have fun exchanging axes. But anyway, no, good job. Vision 2020. We'll do our best to hold our end of it and do our best for all of Biloxi. And then last, I'd just like to comment and follow up on our last meeting. Kristy and Billy Ray, Mike, on the project over in Waters View. We have followed up with Supervisor Rocco. She wants more information on it. I think we've been exchanging some communication with her and one of her engineers, Jackie, I believe it is, to try to get that project going. It'll be a joint venture, it sounds like. Basically, what it entails is clearing out a ditch. And she said she would like Biloxi to help. I said, no problem. We'll put two or three guys from Biloxi on one side, and two or three guys on the county on the other side, and they can race to see who gets to the end, and we all win. But no, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Hello. Just a couple of things. One, I talked to Kristy before the meeting. If we could set up a meeting on Phase 2 of the Wool Market Drainage Project for Wool Market Road with an engineer to look at some alternatives, just because of the issues we're running into. And then the other thing is, I'd like to recognize our police chief while we're here tonight. He's in Washington with our congressman for the State of the Union. So well-deserved for Chief Miller on that. That's all I have.
Okay. And first, condolences to the Boudreaux family. He was a really good man. And also, Mayor, I would like to suggest, make sure that y'all are in the works of perhaps naming a street, a building, a park, or what have you. Maybe something the chief might suggest towards Robert McKeithen, our fallen officer. And that brings us to the public agenda, where we have citizen comments. We have total time of 45 minutes allotted. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak before the council? Yes, ma'am. Please make sure you state your name and address aloud for the record, as well as write it down on that piece of paper provided.
Hi, I'm Robin David, 431 Oakone Place, Biloxi. I'm here tonight representing the Board of the Maritime and Seafood Industry Museum. We would like to applaud your efforts in memorializing a walkway in front of the Maritime and Seafood Industry Museum in honor of our beloved friend, avid volunteer and board member Edmund Boudreaux. He meant a lot to the Maritime Museum. We're going to miss him. We're going to miss him a lot. We've, I've already missed him, we've already received three calls wanting to know who is our, our historian for the city now. Uh, I did refer the calls to Dr. Hustley. Um, but I applaud your efforts, and we can't wait to see the plaque at the museum. We're very honored to, that y'all are doing that for Edmund. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Jane Shambr. I'm the manager for the local history and genealogy department in the Biloxi Library, right down the street. And I'm asking you, and, and asking you if you would mention to your friends and neighbors and so forth, that we're about ready to do History Week in the visitor center. Um, it will be, uh, essentially two days, but on Thursday evening, um, they're going to do, uh, a history exhibit, uh, provided by Keesla Air Force Base. Um, part of it will be some things that were provided by the students, and part of it will be a history of Keesla as well. So that'll be a sneak peek on Thursday evening at the visitor center. Um, on Friday and Saturday, from nine to four, we'll have historical societies, museums, uh, people who want to talk about families, they will come, and they will present tables. So it'll be like a social studies fair, and you'll learn all kinds of things about the coast. Um, we'll also, in the auditorium, there will be presentations and movies, and we'll even have a trivia contest on Saturday, and Grandma Polly will visit with her attic treasures as well. So it's a great event. Um, on Saturday, we're going to honor and dedicate the whole, uh, three-day event to Edmund Budra, who has provided so much history, um, so many hours, and, um, his, his spirit will be with us. So, uh, we're doing this on Saturday so that their family can attend and, and really, you know, appreciate all what we're doing. This event, um, as, as well as the preservation in May events, and the, um, history, um, cemetery tours, are all put together by a group, um, representing the Biloxi Main Street, uh, library department, the Biloxi Public Schools, U S M Department, uh, letters, um, Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, and of course, the City of Biloxi. Um, this event is free, um, it's open to the public, and refreshments will be provided. Um, we love the visitor center because it's so historically correct to have such an event there. We tried doing it in the Civic Center, and it just wasn't right. But we're excited to be there. Uh, if you all can come, please encourage little kids to come as well, and, um, we're looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on our right, my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Nobody? Citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
May I suggest that you start with item B? If that, is it allowed?
We'll start with Resolution B, Ms. Lucy.
That way they can leave as well.
Yeah, I'll...
Objection?
That's fine. I'll support that as well.
Resolution authorizing naming of Edmund Budra Junior Walkway.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. For those of you who don't know Edmund, uh, he was a quiet, studious, amateur, local historian who absorbed the history of Biloxi and shared it willingly. His recent unexpected passing means there's one less local expert who can explain the social and cultural tapestry of Biloxi. My hope is that some, perhaps yet unknown, young person who's been inspired by Edmund's work will step up and fill that void. Edmund was always curious, as all good historical detectives are, of who we are and how Biloxi came to be as we know it. Without a doubt, he's missed by his family and friends and those who hunger for local history and lore. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well done, Paul. Sad enough. It's a good thing. Let's get it on.
All in favor? Unanimous votes? Congratulations.
Okay, nice smiles. One, two. One more, hold on. Here we go. One thing. Please look over at that camera, because it's gonna be on TV tonight at nine o'clock.
There you go.
Okay, Ms. Lucy, will you please read ordinance A?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment from R S ten low-density and R M thirty high-density multifamily to C B community business for two parcels of land identified as one forty Brady Drive and an unaddressed parcel running up Palm Beach Boulevard.
Do you have a motion? Yeah?
Second.
Who's got a motion? Mr. Barrett? Barrett and Mr. Glavine. Being a first reading, we'll move on to ord, uh, Resolution C.
Resolution to deny a requested zoning map amendment and grant conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of short-term rentals within four identified properties as eighteen eighty Southern Avenue.
I move, uh, Plan and Commission to deny.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence to deny.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, Plan and Commission went through this pretty good, and it was a ton of change. I think four apartments inside this apartment complex. And we always said one thing, we either do them all or none. We already went through this at the Cove, other condominiums, other apartments, so we, we need to stand by what we did the first time. So that needed to be denied.
Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing. I, I support the councilman in that ward.
Mr. Deming?
Yeah, because it's written the way that it is, will you clarify the, um, resolution for me?
It's a little confusing the way it's written. What, what happened is, is that the, um, owners of the property came forward to request a zoning change to go to community business to allow short-term rental as a use-by right on this property. During the course of the application, we found out that they were only asking for short-term rental to be allowed in four of the units. Uh, so if they were asking for short-term rental on the entire complex, it would have justified asking for a zoning change. But since they were only asking for four units, the property is already zoned, uh, R M thirty, which allows condition, uh, short-term rental as a conditional use. So during the planning commission meeting, uh, we recommended that they, the planning commission, reduce the scope of the request, uh, which would be to deny the zoning change request, but then to approve the conditional, uh, conditional use to allow them to have four units for short-term rental.
And so the, the planning commission, I think it was almost unanimous, was it, what was the, the vote?
I think it was, yeah, twelve, zero, one, I believe.
One abstention, so twelve, so unanimously they voted to not pass the zoning map amendment, but do grant the conditional use approval, right?
That's correct, yes.
So by passage of this resolution, we are granting, we are, uh, we are conferring what the planning commission suggested.
Right, you're, you're, uh, upholding the denial, but approving the conditional use with the, the vote that you take.
Yeah, but... Oh, I have a question. George, did you move to deny this, or did you move to move it? As written?
This is why I'm discussing this. Right, so he's, he's denying the denial, and deny the approval. Well, just withdraw your second.
So do you want to deny the four apartments being able to do short-term rental? Okay, so he wants to deny the whole thing?
I think, and that's why I wanted to, because it's written...
I, I, I thought we were... George, so you're moving to deny this resolution altogether, or you're, you're doing what it's, how it's written? Motion to not deny the requested zoning map amendment and grant the conditional use? Is it...
If you vote, if you vote in the affirmative, if you vote in the affirmative, you would be denying the zoning change application, but then in the same approving...
We're approving a conditional use.
Allowing this short-term rental.
That's what we're doing, right? We're denying the, the, the zoning map change, but we're approving the conditional use.
So, I, I have a question.
What George is moving, I'm sorry, Nathan, what George's, he moved to deny the resolution itself. So he moved to...
I just want to clarify that. Is that you...
So he's not, he didn't move to approve it the way it's written, he moved to deny the way it's written. So...
That's how it's written on here.
He's denying the whole thing.
So he doesn't want the four units.
Is there no...
He's denying the deny.
I'm going with the planning commission recommended. They recommended to deny. Then they, then they should not be together. I told you that before. I told you all that before.
What, what do I need, Peter?
You can't pass something.
What were the proper...
So we're, we're denying, we're denying the zoning map amendment, but we're approving the conditional use, right?
Yes.
That's how this is written.
Right, Peter, um, the zoning map amendment is case number twenty-dash-zero-zero-one. The conditional use application is case nineteen-dash-zero-zero-two. Is there a parliamentary function in which we can bifurcate this resolution and vote on those two cases separately?
It is, but I think you could also have a motion either to uphold the planning commission or to uphold in part and deny in part, and that would achieve the same purpose.
Yes. I agree. I think that we, I, I think that we all want to, now that you understand what we're doing, I think we want to uphold what the planning commission did.
So he needs to retract his motion and just make a motion.
That's what I've understood, why y'all jacked this stuff together. It's stupid. Then you gotta sit there like that, and figure out what you're doing, you're denying, but you're not denying. So that's pretty dumb, to have these two things together in one resolution. It can't be that hard to separate.
And I'll, I'll let in another.
Withdraw the motion to deny.
Withdraw his motion to deny.
Now he goes to say, "Hey, well, we're not denying the poor thing we're approving this year."
Is the effect...
Things says to deny.
Is the effect you're gonna approve, uh, short-term rental for four of these thirty units?
That's it, four.
So he just needs to retract his, um, motion and...
True.
So he needs to withdraw his motion.
Alright, I withdraw my second.
So you want to, and to approve this resolution?
Yep, I withdraw my second.
I can add Mr. Glavine. Any more discussion?
I have no problem with that. And I'm telling you what, Peter, do never put, don't ever put them one of these together again. I'll table it, I'll move it, I'll throw it in the trash can. It's about time, I thought writing these things right the first time.
Alright.
Alright.
I'll take all the blame.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My concern is, I had to read this a couple of times, okay? When the dust settles, we're, uh, permitting four conditional uses on four, uh, one, on, on four distinct units. I think it's forty-six units, spread over four, seven, six or seven structures, I think.
That's correct, seven.
And as I recall, it may be in this structure, we've got one unit out of that eight units, one out of these fourteen units, one out of this six-unit something or other. My concern is, when we started on this short-term rental, Cypress Cove was the first one that came up. And you may recall that some of those are being marketed as short-term rentals, and some of them were already rented as apartments. That's exactly what we're doing here, again. And I think that these apartment complexes should either be all short-term rental or all, uh, long-term rental. Uh, but, and, uh, the, the issue becomes tracking these and marketing these, and how are you going to deny, if there are forty-six units we're approving for, how are you gonna deny the other forty-six?
Okay, well, there is a difference...
Forty-two.
There is a difference between the Cypress, uh, development and this one. Uh, the Cypress development is condominiums, so they're each individually owned. And in this case, the entire property is owned by one owner, one developer.
Right.
Uh, we, we do have the, um, numbers, the applications for the numbers that are, are, uh, receiving an application for the short-term rental. Uh, they'll be inspected by the fire department, just like we would any others. If, and we'll just have to investigate it the same way we're doing now with any other development. If we see that there are unauthorized, uh, apartments being used for short-term rental, then we'll handle them through code enforcement.
Recently, we approved Briarfield. Uh, there were some new apartments there, I think, were there four?
Thirty.
Thirty units.
Thirty total, yes, sir.
Thirty units, it was gonna be an apartment complex. They came back, uh, later and, and wanted them all as short-term rental units. And I think we approved the whole complex.
Well, we, okay. Uh, actually, what happened is Mr. Zane changed that application. He only asked that four be used for short-term rental.
So even...
That was after, after the fact.
So, but we approved the entire complex, right, of how many units it was? And now he's only gonna have four of those units?
Yes, sir.
So, then the, this particular apartment complex, they could ask for the whole thing to be approved for short-term rentals, and then later come back and just designate these particular four. It's a procedural thing more than anything else.
Anything beyond the four, we would bring back to the planning commission and back to the city council.
Right.
On, on either complex.
Right.
Let me insert too, that I think there's language where we can review sales tax returns, which in effect looks at, uh, how many and things that were, I mean, that's part of, uh, our code.
The renewal, yes.
That we're allowed to get reports on what they do from a short-term, uh, you know, tax...
You're not collecting a penny on, on short-term rentals. Why you think they're doing this? And what you gonna do now, you will not have any apartments in the city of Biloxi. Everybody's just gonna go, short-term rental. You can't run the money down, you know it better than anybody. When they go through all these other companies, you'll never see the money come back to the city of Biloxi tax.
Well, I think, you know, when, the money that we're, we're due through that is, would be sales tax, and I, eighteen point five percent of the diversion, and we have the language in this thing to, so, if we got two hundred, we should have two hundred sales tax returns that we can review, which we can't do for any other business, period, whether it's, uh, you know, any, any type of business. But in this, we can.
Each year, each year when they renew, they have to come back in and submit...
Well, let me ask you a question. All the short-term rentals we had, how many, how much tax have we received so far?
I don't know.
Right. And two years from now, you see the same thing.
Well, we have the language now that we can say, "Give me, show, show me your tax. You show me your tap report," every, you know, every month.
We, we won't have a full year until this April, and then we'll be able to start tracking that, so...
The reason they changed it is the purpose. I mean, y'all gotta wake up. There will be no apartments left in the city of Biloxi.
We're fully aware of the issues. It's not just that, it's every business, and we can't, we can't tell you what, uh, specific, but in this case, we can. We can tell you what that, that number's generated by that specific business. We can't do that for any other, with D O R, State Tax Commission, but at least in this particular sick, we can, we can get it done.
Poof.
But, but, time will tell whether it, it drives other things, but I mean, this, you know...
They send us through companies. You never, ever know when the money comes back from the company, if they ever pay anything back to the state. That's the problem. It's not paid to the state, it's paid through a company, and the company sends the money back, if they ever do that.
No.
And you'll never run it down.
No.
Yeah, they do.
No, you don't. You got a tap account that you have to do every month.
Gotta hit the thing.
You know, okay.
Yeah, I would like to get a word in, if, if you guys don't mind, and wanna kind of get back to the resolution at hand, if all possible. And, um, Ms. Creel, I, I understand what you're saying. The planning commission, uh, submitted this. This was submitted by the planning commission to deny the zoning, and that's something that we established a while back. And then the other thing was, uh, under R M thirty, that short-term rental is allowed, and we're talking four units. And I think we said anything four and under will be able to approve. So this is within the rules and the staff, uh, that we've established in order to move this forward. Basically, is what, what, what I'm seeing here. So we want to deny the zoning and establish the rental of the four units.
Approve the, approve the conditional use, yes.
Approve the conditional use.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Unanimous votes? Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm so moved.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
On this, on E, that's just where we sold the boat and we're paying someone a ten percent fee of what we collected for being a broker, is that correct? So we're fifty-four thousand in the good, not six thousand in the negative, right? On that, okay. And then on I, I had someone contact me today, that's the, the boardwalk. Can you refresh my memory where that funding is coming from?
Tidlins.
That's a hundred percent Tidlins or is that an eighty-twenty?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent Tidlins, okay.
With the county, county...
And then on 5-0, that's just us accepting the land that we agreed upon a year and a half or so ago because the resolution was passed to build the roadway and infrastructure and going into the next phase.
That's correct, three for three.
That's all I have. And then I'll be opposed on D.
D as in dog?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item H, this is Biloxi Chamber of Commerce, Chamber Craft Beer Fest 2020. I think we did this last year for the same amount and maybe the year before and thinking about it rattling around in my head is, when we did MGM Stadium, we talked about a dollar or two or whatever it was for each of the baseball tickets, but also there was some sort of sliding scale based on the face value of the tickets for admissions to events or something in there. Are we, as I recall, you know, if you had a rock concert there, if the tickets were five hundred bucks, maybe you got fifteen bucks of that or something. If they were twenty-five bucks, you got two bucks. But could we research, I mean, could we research that, Peter? I don't expect you to carry that contract around with you in your briefcase.
No, it is, it's, I think for something like thirty dollars, it's three dollars, something, it's roughly a ten percent sort of fee.
But anyway, I'm thinking here we're doing flat fees. I don't know if we want to set precedence, although we've done that. Like I said, I was just thinking about this and I, I mean, I just don't know if it's gonna pay the utility, I don't think it'll pay the utility bills, but it's five hundred dollars more than we're making, so I, you know, I can't fault that. But could we look to see on that contract for these tickets to events, if we need to be doing that, let's, I mean, I'd just like to see us be consistent on that. Thank you.
Mr. Deming? Mr. Lawrence?
How much, how much money, did you say we got for the 5-0?
We sold it for sixty thousand, but we had a thing for a company that advertised.
So it broke, we got it, sold it at six thousand?
Fifty-four net.
Yeah. I took that shot.
He would've sold it for sixty-six, he said.
The other one was property that we received, property in the city of Biloxi.
Yeah, on 5-0, is that in, is that in the county or the city?
Some of them both.
Which one's he asking about?
That's Pitcher Point.
Oh, yeah. City of Biloxi.
It's in the city limits?
In the city.
Okay. But there is some additional property that's involved that is in the county where that proposed roadway would go in the future? Okay.
So everything we received in the city of Biloxi. And on I, for the Fred Hayes, I think it's a great thing, I think it should be in the city of Biloxi on downtown. I don't think it should be on the front beach. First hurricane to take it down. I have no problem doing it. I think you said, you spent two million dollars on the road downtown Biloxi, you need to find a spot, maybe by the Sanger, by the bank, anything, I think you need to put it downtown. More people will see this thing downtown than ever on the beach.
Well, and it'd be a drawdown.
I recommend that to the city council.
I'd be happy to discuss that with you. We've got some plans where hurricanes will not impact it especially, but you know, you see when you come to Biloxi, the lighthouse, you know, and some other things that I'd be happy to discuss with you on that. But you need to look at the engineering component of this thing and so we'd be happy to...
I'd be interested to sit down. I'm just thinking, anything we can do downtown to get folks, you know, to throw axes or catch axes?
Is any real like about a Sanger? We're working on a Sanger, Peter, to say, is anything close enough that we own where you could set something like that by the Sanger?
The Sangers, we issued a notice proceed, they, we're messing around with some issues, trying to get their scaffolding up, but they can't get scaffolding up till we get the Sanger alley, alley straightened out. They're in there getting started though. The contractor is working, but he can't get his scaffolding up until we get the alleys...
Do you own any property at all on, on downtown Biloxi, like on a corner? Does the city actually own anything right now?
Oh, he's talking about the Hayes statue.
Like in front of the Bark Building, right in that area or where, where are you talking about?
Anyway, downtown.
Across the street where the Golden Fisherman was? It's all part of the hospital arrangement. Across the street from it was, is where Betty Gates used to be?
Yeah.
That's private. So as far as downtown closer to the center, you know, Magnolia Street, Deloney, we don't own any property there.
The bank property, did you try to talk to them? That nice pretty piece of green on side of the bank?
Yeah, that, that green space there by the bank is owned by the Mississippi National Bank or now Bancorp South.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, I just think it'd be, serve the city way better downtown than on the front beach by itself. I think we need to attract people downtown and that'd be a good attraction, just like the Sangers, like all the rest of what we're trying to do. Those are good things. I think that they need to be looked at before you put it on the beach. I'd like to see you bring that back to the council. Nobody's against doing this.
But we've got our reasons why we want to do that.
But I still think it's good for Trump.
Especially since it was Fred Hayes Boulevard, it was named that, okay? So that part of, at one point in time, that part of the beach was Fred Hayes Boulevard, okay? We've got our reasons to have it discussed. You know how we discuss.
That's where the axes come in, right? But, but all we're doing is, all we're doing is allocating the funds tonight with this resolution, okay?
That's all we're doing.
A lot of partners, MDA, as well as Mississippi Power, so this is the first and we feel like we're gonna have a significant piece of history and future to tell you to...
Crazy. Well, I mean, nobody's against that when you have twenty-four people, went to the moon, and one was, one was from the city of Biloxi. That's pretty amazing, you know, when you look at that. A lot of people don't know that.
It's Adam and Eve.
Yeah. So nobody has a problem with the mountain, I just think it would serve the city better downtown, since we're trying to spend so much money to make that area better. Like maybe a lot of people walk, they're not gonna walk down the street when the boat arrived, but you'll come, the hot avenue's quicker and walk down there to see it there. That's just my opinion, that's all.
You got any other items?
Say again?
You have any other items you want to discuss?
No, Dixon. No, Dixon.
No?
That's enough.
Mr. Gaines?
George, did you cover all of them?
Covered them all, yeah.
Okay, we're good.
We're good? Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote with Barrett against D as in dog. Are there any other exceptions?
D as in dog, I'm tempted, they're learning, they're learning. D as in dog.
No? All right. No code enforcement, so I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Let's go, man. You came for a reason.
You can do your part.
That's right. You've been out of town for a whole week, I hope you brought some money when you come back. No, that's not good.
No, I'm sorry, but there is 1.7 million that's in stage four of five to be coming down fairly quickly.
Y'all did a great job keeping that stuff active, really. Appreciate that.
Madam President, before you gavel us out, I just want to introduce Mr. Brian Thompson, who's the new director of staff of the 81st Training Wing, is with us tonight. He's essentially our new contact with Keesler. And I just wanted to recognize him and, he wanted to know what the city council was like and so I said, come on, come on down. Come on down, it's always entertaining.
Have you been involved with Keesler a lot? You know, the connected, all the commanders, you know, gotta know them quick 'cause they don't last for about eighteen months and then they gone.
Do you have a motion to recess?
Madam President, if you'll allow me, I just found out yesterday Johnny Byrd passed away. Pat, Johnny Byrd, Pat Byrd, Lawrence Byrd, you know, he's really, was in the school systems for a long time, you know, in, in our area. I, I'd like to just offer that we close in memory of Mr. John, Johnny Byrd, if that's okay.
Okay. Motion to adjourn in Johnny Byrd's name by Mr. Glavine, seconded by everyone, all in favor. Unanimous votes, meeting recessed. Good night, everyone.